I'm fine.
Hey Andrew, what's the meeting ID number? Did I try to come in from a different way?
It is. Okay, are we all set to start Mayor?
Yes, we are, please, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Wilcoxen. Councilmember Jones Chance.
Present.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
Councilperson Morgan.
Present.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present.
For six present or as a quorum.
Make a motion to.
Thank you.
Make a motion to excuse councilmember Wilcoxen.
Support.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard three ayes.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Alright, excused, motion passed. Alright, thank you. Clerk Kalingo.
Also, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Are there any additions or subtractions to the agenda, anything anyone would like to change? Okay, see none, is this a roll call or a voice?
Voice vote is fine.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda?
Was there a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Alright, agenda is approved as written. Okay.
Council, the next item on the agenda is public comment. There currently have individuals in the attendees list. The first with their hand raised was Lamar Weir. I'll allow them to speak now, you'll have three minutes to address council.
Good evening, everyone. Lamar Weir from Congresswoman Dingo's office. One, just thank you for having this meeting and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm really here to hear important updates and concerns that are going on in the Ipsaline community and so that our office can continue to be as best of a resource as possible.
Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised in the attendees list is Desiree Simmons. I'll allow them to speak now.
Desiree.
She's coming on now.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Good to hear your voices. So while I was heartened to see increasing policing and resources to the Ipsaline Police Department on everyone's agenda today, I was heartened to see housing on most of your, and most of your goals. And of course, I definitely would like to know a lot more clarity about what that means in terms of what kind of approaches people are looking at. I want to lift up and name very clearly that I think an affordability ordinance is a necessity and something that council can do right away. When thinking about housing, I think about if we can't do something as simple as protecting the most vulnerable in our community, then what does that communicate overall to our residents? When thinking about who and who has the responsibility and whether the market will suffice? When looking at the upcoming current fear about evictions due to the coronavirus, Michigan is estimated at 39.1% possible evictions. And so even if we think about 25% here in Washtenaw County, that would be 91,750 people who would be out on the streets. And based on what we know about evictions here in the county, we know that the majority of evictions happen in Ipsaline area, in the city of Ipsaline, as well as in Ipsaline Township. And so that's a lot of people in our communities. And so if we can't count on the market to keep those people safe, safe and housed during a global, you know, during the pandemic and all that it has come with it, then I don't think we can totally focus and think that they will then also turn around and protect those who are low income and have other needs that reduce availability of housing. And also when thinking about when I was in the sessions around the Water Street Development, they talked about the area median income and how that would be their metric for deciding what the, this isn't even about more affordable housing in that space, this is just what metric are they going to use in terms of determining what is affordable? And so if we can't determine what is affordable for our community, then we are looking in the face an opportunity to change actually what our community will look like. So I urge council to take action and this is something that can happen. There's a lot of information, a lot of folks that can help even in drafting up the ordinance. And, and so definitely wanting to continue to put pressure on, on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised. Alyssa Newsome, allow them to speak now.
Hi, I didn't realize I was up so soon. Um, I just want to say hi to Jeff Bernstein over there. I'm a student at Eastern in the MPA program at the moment. I do, I'm thinking of going back just COVID stuff and I've thought about doing NMU. So if you have any, you know, glowing recommendations of the graduate program, I'd love to hear it.
Shoot me an email, Alyssa, shoot me an email, I'd be happy to talk with you.
Absolutely, alright. So that aside, I work for the Fair Housing Commission of Southeastern Michigan and I'm not speaking in the capacity as an employee, but I just want to say that there has been a trend of people reaching out to us and we have to refer them out because there's just so many issues of rent going up for people, especially those on section eight vouchers. The landlords or leasing companies are figuring out what the, you know, the market level for the section eight vouchers are and then raising it by, you know, just a hundred dollars enough to take away the ability to afford housing. And unfortunately, there's not anything that we can do in our capacity. So I just wanted to voice my support also for an affordability ordinance and just say that, you know, there's people on my end that we recognize that council is limited in their capacity to, you know, you have a lot of things pulling your attention and I just wanted to express my support and say that we're doing a lot of legwork on our end to try and make a transition into change ordinances, things like that, a little easier on you guys. So I just want you to understand that. I see us as being on the same team and I would really like to see something move forward in the regards to the affordability and other things that have been proposed in regards to making housing more accessible. Thank you.
Thanks Alyssa, appreciate that.
Of course.
Council, that was the last individual with their hand raised in the attendees list. We can wait a few moments before moving on.
Okay.
Seeing no other hands raised, we're going to the, the next agenda item, resolutions, motions and discussions. And the only item under that list is discussion on fiscal year 21, 22 goals with the facilitator, Dr. Jeffrey Bernstein. So I will go ahead and Mayor, if you'd like to introduce Dr. Bernstein or we can just yield the floor to him.
Um, well, I don't really have any bio information. I'm sorry about that, but I think some of us from council, Dr. Bernstein was with us before at a goal setting, if I'm not, if I'm remembering correctly. And so we can, Andrew, if you would like to do an introduction or we can just yield the floor to Dr. Bernstein and move right along. He can, he, why don't we let him introduce himself to us?
Okay, um, thank you, everyone, and I'm honored to be asked back. I did work with the Ipsaline City Council in 2018 on the goal setting and it was very educational for me. I learned a lot and enjoyed doing it and I'm honored to be asked back and invited to do this again. So let me just briefly say just a very little bit about myself. I am a native New Yorker. I've lived here in Michigan since 1991 and I have been on the faculty in political science at Eastern since 1997. And I teach in American politics. I also teach public administration, which is how I have gotten involved in some local government matters. And many of our students, as you know, have worked for or been part of this city and the city council and the departments for quite a while. I noticed one of our current MPA students is now working for the city, so hi Chelsea. And, and there are others, more than one of you have suffered through my classes over the years and I applaud your, I applaud your fortitude and I probably realize if there were three votes not to bring me back, that those would be the three who voted against me. But at any event, it's, I'm just honored to be here and I just want to say, by way of introduction, I know stuff about Ipsaline and I know stuff about local government, but I think every person that I am staring at on this Zoom screen in front of me knows more about Ipsaline and knows more about local government than I do. My role here is not to be the expert because I can't be the expert. You are the experts. My role here is to take the 17 or so people in front of me, all of whom have different goals, all of whom have different priorities for the coming year. In a world, by the way, where as you know, there's an old Yiddish saying, man plans and God laughs. And I think the last year has been very true. You have planned, you have done your job and God laughed at all of you and through the horrific year that we've all just had at you. So my goal here and my role here, as I see it, is really to work with you to design and facilitate a process to help you think through and work through what are the top goals you have going forward and what would you like to achieve over the next year and even looking beyond that a little bit. I'd like to introduce Tamea Vanjeleven, who is one of my students at Eastern Michigan University and she will be here taking notes and helping with our write-up and helping with the stuff that I share. So Tamea, it's nice to have you here tonight, thanks for being here. So the plan I have, what I think I'd like to do and would be the most useful for all of us, last year Morgan Milner created a goal-setting process for the city and you have a bunch of goals that were worked through and that were passed. And obviously, as I said earlier, COVID has been a hell of an interruption in the year and I have no doubt that many of the things you might have wanted to accomplish in the last year may not have gotten done for that reason. But what I would like to do is to go section by section through the goals. They're divided up from the report last year into community, infrastructure, and then council staff matters. So those three headings, and there are some subheadings within them. I'd like to start off with the goals from last year and invite you to spend just a few moments looking at them and sort of saying, what do you think you've accomplished? What things were not accomplished but really remain very high on your list for this year? Maybe what things have kind of fallen off the priority list? And then open it up for any new goals that you might have and would like to add that would fit into that category. I will collect them, Tamea and I will collect them. And next week, what I'd like to do is to take those items in each section and put them up for a vote and sort of have you think about ranking the order of them. So for today, my main goal is to go through this whole list of possible things and just generate what are some ideas, what are some goals that you have? And then, as I said, work a little bit more next week on the prioritization of them. I'll give you a little bit of time between this week and next to look at the sets of goals and think about priorities and think about things that are missing. So if that is okay as a way to start, and I'll just point out that I am working for you here, you are the ones who know what you're doing. And if there are things you'd like to say or if there are suggestions you have, please, please chime in. I'm very happy to take your ideas and suggestions. I'm going to share my screen or I should say I'm going to try to share my screen. I've been teaching this way for 10 months and I still don't know that I'm good at it. But I am going to share my screen, hopefully this works. Can you all see the screen that I have up now?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent, excellent, love it when a plan comes together. So what I have here, this is under the section from last year's report that was labeled "Community/Connection." And here are the goals, you can see them in front of you, that you had proposed and thought about doing last year. So let me throw it out to you just as a first question. Of the things you see on this list, what has been done? What can we cross off and just say, okay, we're there, we've gotten where we want to go?
The freight house relationship has been altered.
Okay, to a point where the city is happy with that?
I believe so. The city manager can also respond to that one.
Um, I think providing youth mini grants to support youth initiatives has been initiated and, and continued.
Okay.
Effectively administered 2020 elections.
Yeah, that's, that's not coming back again.
We improved voter turnout.
Yes, we did, for the majority of our 10 precincts, the.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Roughly a 7% increase.
Good.
If I may just put in a very brief plug, I'd like to thank Andrew and the clerk's office, they did a lot of work with us on campus and with our students to help get them registered to vote and I just, Andrew, let me just publicly thank you for all you did to help us on campus.
Thank you.
I was going to jump in and say that we have improved on council meeting prep and transparency and communication. I, I think that needs to continue though, I don't think it's something that we should cross off as like done forever.
Which one was that, Mayor Pro Tem?
Correct, yep, yep, it was me.
No, I know it was you, but which one was it?
Oh, I'm sorry, improve council meeting prep and transparency and communication.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, if we're checking off things that we have done or worked on, that has definitely happened, but I think that we have more work to do across the board.
We also did the youth mini grants. And did we not offer those, the historic walking tours? I don't know if we did through, all the way through October, but I know there was at least a couple.
Well, with, with the first one, and that's kind of like, like multifaceted, when it says develop and implement comprehensive communication plan, including modern website, I think our communication has been updated and upgraded. I'm not sure about the website, but as far as our, our interconnectivity and our, what do you call these, our iPads and things, I think we have increased in going in the right direction toward connectivity.
I included the website on my goals.
Okay.
For this time, because I think it needs to be refreshed and made more user-friendly and just update it to make communication a little bit easier. So I, I think we still need to keep on there about the website.
Should we change the language of number one to more reflect what you've done and what needs to be done? Because if you have different language, that'll help make the goal more transparent and easy to, to follow. I'd, I'd love to know if you have different language to propose.
I think it encapsulates what needs to happen. I mean, we've made progress, but I think there's, I haven't seen a comprehensive communication plan. Last year, my goal was to have a communications director and I still have that on my goal, so.
Okay. Anything else we should think about, um, taking off the list, either because it's done or either because it's just not a priority at this point?
Well, we did, I don't think it was mentioned, the improved see click fix, because we now have a different system we're using.
So we still, yeah, we still have see click fix.
Okay, so don't.
Yeah, we still have it, we didn't get rid of it. What we ended up doing was we ended up adding to the tools that the community can use to report, because at the time, we only had see click fix. And we had problems with multiple complaints and cleaning that up and things like that. And I think we've cleaned that up. Joe, his department, Elise, is in charge of that. Joe, can you pipe in, can you chime in about that?
Yeah, we, we have definitely cleaned up our see click fix portal. Sometimes it gets better than others and this year it's, it was, it was pretty easy to actually clean it up based on the fact that we weren't enforcing for a portion of the year and so we could actually go through and clean up a lot of those things. But to kind of, you know, talk about, you know, we, we did, city council did adopt a public participation plan at the beginning of 2020. And so I think that is definitely something that, that we have. It helps us put together for purposes of communicating development processes. It really helps to do that and we are actually in the process of updating our website. Every three years, our current website provider allows us to do that. And so we have started the process of that. COVID kind of put a little hamper on it, but it is ongoing.
We're going to keep that on there because we're going to make sure we check that.
Yes, yes.
So Jeff, I think you can probably take off improved.
Okay.
I also, I also believe, um, as far as assisting in functionality of boards and commissions, there were, the trainings were held. I don't know the extent of what was expected or what was wanted by council or staff happened fully, but I know that we did have training for boards and commissions post this last goal-setting session to bring everybody up to speed and on the same page.
So we're going to be honing that a little bit. It, it, the original goal was to hold two, one training or two trainings per year. Through discussions with the city manager, she has some excellent suggestions about creating YouTube videos for onboarding for boards and commissions. So that's something that we're going to be implementing this year.
That's a great idea, a great idea.
I'd like to keep that on there because I know the, the parliamentary training that we had, a lot of people from the commissions didn't show up. And I've sat through some of those meetings and clearly that is still lacking. I've sat through meetings where people didn't, didn't know what was going on and didn't, didn't know a lot of things about how the city worked as well, so.
And I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me. No, I was just going to say, I agree with you on that, on the council member, Will Coxen. I was very disappointed that more board members and commission members did not attend the parliamentary training, because I had been to some meetings and saw that was needed and that was one of the reasons that I was really pushing for us to have that training. But we do in some way need to bring our commission members and board members into training so that they do know how to run the meeting and, and efficiently. I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was actually just going to say that the, when I was bringing that up, I didn't necessarily mean to strike it, I just was lifting up that we had done some work, not all the work, so, yeah.
I, I think one of the things that can be taken off is to create or sponsor Ipsy Art Prize to incorporate public art opportunities, as important as I believe art is, I think is, is not a luxury right now.
Could we keep that on to just like at the moment? You know what I mean? Because I, I'm with you on feeling that, that, we have so many other things that I guess are somehow more important, but I guess I don't want to lose sight of it and maybe we just keep it on there for a minute, you know, because we haven't addressed it this past year, if that makes sense?
And I was going right to utilize funding for public art on city trucks. Um, I'm, like I said, again, I'm a fan of art and maybe we can leave it on there, I think it's so low in the priority list for myself, but we can leave it on there, but I just want to consider that.
One thing I, one, one thing I might suggest, and this is obviously up to you, is if it is left on the list, even if it scores low for this year, as it seems it might, given all the challenges for this year, then next year, when someone comes and facilitates this, it remains on the list and, you know, and it, it wouldn't be brought up much as it's being brought up here. Although, given obviously what I'm kind of picking up here is that this might not be something that scores very high this year.
I, I agree with that too. I guess I didn't necessarily put things on my list this year, knowing that we haven't completed them from last year or, you know, or that they would be addressed. But I, I think it's okay, like capture even if it's low, it's kind of like it's on the radar somewhere that we can keep for future somehow.
Yeah, I have two things, just for clarity. So are we going, I thought last year, like the ones in bold were what kind of made it through our goal-setting, is that what we should be focusing on or should we be focusing?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Should we be focusing on the ones that are bold because they kind of passed that round of cuts last year or?
Well, I guess my, my answer to that would be, they might have passed last year, but this is a different year than it was last year. So I would recommend, it may well be that the items that were bolded last year will remain bolded this year, but I would recommend looking at the entire list because some stuff from the bottom may bubble up and some stuff from the top may, you know, fall down.
Sure, okay, that, that's helpful. I just want to also just say that it didn't seem like we actually reestablished the Parks and Rec Department, which was something that we all talked a lot about last year. I'm still interested in that. I know that COVID presented obvious challenges, but it kind of ties into the, if you go down a few, the ask for more entertainment at Frog Island. Part of what I included in my goals this year was maybe the city actually purchasing equipment for outdoor movies like we did over at downtown behind like Puffer Reds in the summertime and over near Eastern's campus in the parking lot by the water tower. It would tie into community engagement and also help with like the overall well-being. We don't have a lot of things for youth to do in the city and it's something free and fun for families, so I just would like to continue including that. This year, I included it in my goal as a more broad, like if we purchase the equipment, it's something that we'll always have at, ready and the rest of it that would need to fall into place would be the organizing and making sure that we have staff to execute.
So right now, are we, we're not giving our, our new goals or like our ideas for goals now, are we, did I miss?
No, my, my, and obviously, my sense was I'd like to spend tonight kind of just making sure we have a list. I will share that list with you in the next day or two and then you can take that list, look at it, make sure you're happy with the list and then we can talk more about prioritization next week.
I only ask that question because I think, for, for me personally, a part of what we're doing here, I did when I created my new goal, so I couldn't, I carried over goals from 2020 on my goals from 2021 that I saw in each section that I really felt were priority and didn't get completed. Just to, because I figured this process would need to happen. So some of these things, like kind of like with Annie, I'm just piggybacking on what you said, I have that, the Parks and Rec Department on my goals for 21 because it didn't happen in 20.
Yeah, and I, I suspect that the items that ranked high this past year but didn't happen will no doubt end up high on most lists as we head forward.
Yeah, and I didn't necessarily include stuff from last year to carry over because I, you know, to, because I thought we would be reviewing like this, but, which I, I think is, I don't know, it feels productive to me actually to just kind of go through this and see what we carry over, like what's, what have we done and take that off the list? But if we haven't done it, whether it's going to be a priority or not this year, I still feel like it's worth keeping on the list at the moment and then, you know, we're going to rank it later to just, it's something we're still aspiring to at some future date.
That, that makes sense to me. That makes sense to me. So is there anything else on the list that you want to get rid, you want to get rid of at this point?
Whatever we got, Ruth.
So by my count, I have the second. So by my count, I have the second one, the recap, recalibrate relationship with Freight House. I have the third one, the youth mini grants to support youth initiatives. I have the improved see click fix portal. And I have effectively administer the 2020 elections as the four items that I have crossed off my list.
Okay, you could also cross off live stream.
I was going to ask you about that.
You do live stream the boards, the commissions and council meetings.
That is, it, it could be stricken from this. I mean, because of COVID, naturally all boards and commission meetings are live streamed, but we're going to be using the iCompass software, but all, all the departments are are up to speed on that. So we will be ready once we go back to in-person meetings.
Okay.
Of course, I guess we can strike off effectively administer 2020 elections. That's, that's done.
And thank God it's not coming back.
Question, question. With regards to that youth mini grant, I thought in the previous council meetings, we were thinking of just continuing that on a yearly basis. So is that something that we need to strike out or since we're still planning to do that in the future?
Which one was that Reagan? I missed the beginning.
Mayor, the youth mini grant support.
All right. To me, we have a system for it and it would carry forward. I guess that's how I was viewing taking it off the list. Like I want to support that going forward. I didn't know that we needed necessarily have it as a goal now. To me, it's kind of like something that we're doing.
Right. We developed a process for, for budget for, at budget time.
So at budget time, we would specify how much we can do, but that this is something that we do or implemented.
Right.
That's my take. Yeah.
For clarity, where it says seek governmental partnerships and agreements with neighboring cities, isn't that something that as a municipality, we're constantly seeking to do? Or is this about specific methodology on how to do?
I think last year, the, the idea was that we hadn't been doing it enough.
Okay. Strategies on how, okay.
You know, one, one of the words that I would use in this conversation is priorities because I think everything on this list is obviously important and everything on this list would make life in Ypsilanti better. But as one of my advisors told me when I was in school, if you have more than, you know, a small number of priorities, you don't have priorities. So I think the, the goal is really to say, yes, it's important. It's something we'd like to do, but what are the things you're prioritizing most going forward? And obviously seeking governmental partnerships can be very much for the good of Ypsilanti. Given limited staff time and limited resources, how much time do you intend to spend doing that in the next year? That's something all of you need to figure out and think through.
But I think we do some of that almost on an ongoing, you know, basis. Not that we're doing, maybe not doing as much as we could, but I know right now we're doing a lot with with the township and the county on the walkover 94 and a couple of other projects. So I mean, we are doing some of it, not to say that we can't do more.
Um, is there anything, looking at the goals that you've thought about and put together, anything that should be added to the list under the heading of community connection?
So you're asking from our new goals for 21?
New goals, things, things that were not on this list last year that now moving forward, you'd like to put on the list and try to make a bigger priority for the city.
I have a minute so I can access.
Look at mine.
Give you all a minute to.
Well, yeah.
Um, I feel like one of mine might go into community connection because it is working in partnership with Eastern Michigan to address some of our housing needs.
Okay. So how, um, how would you phrase it as sort of a one liner for a chart like this?
Developing, I'm sorry, working in partnership with EMU to address housing needs.
Okay. Okay. Any comments on that one or any other ideas that people have?
I think we need to separate the develop and implement comprehensive communication plan. I think we need to make those two different things because I have the refresh and the yeah, the refreshing and updating of the website and its functionality, customer friendliness and council member Will Coxon. His is more with having a community, communications director. I think the process by which we communicate. I think they're different.
Yep.
Okay, um, would either of you or anybody else like to take a crack at wording that we could put on the sheet for you to consider?
I would just say develop comprehensive communication plan including hiring a director. And then the other one would be refresh and upgrades to these websites and functionality.
That's pretty good by me.
It's one that's, I, I would say, sorry, as committee, I would say create create a common space with warming capabilities.
Is this a total, a separate, separate idea?
Yes, yes. Community connection.
Councilmember Morgan, before I get to you, as I just want to say, I think that breaking up that one big item into the two separate components is probably a very good idea. Think it'll sort of help focus you on the, on the key pieces of that. Okay. Councilmember Morgan, um, community, creating a community warming space?
Create, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Burns, Dr. Burns, can you just?
Please feel free to call me Jeff. Please feel free to call me Jeff, by the way.
All right, Jeff. Um, can you tell us, because I have, I have my goals, the new goals pulled up and we, I'm using one screen. What are the next sections to make sure that like, for instance, something that I am saying, I'm seeing safety as the next wouldn't go in this section. I need to wait for coming. So can you just give us like a really brief, what are the sections we broke it down into?
Absolutely. So under community, we have two categories, connection and safety. So community connection, community safety. And then under infrastructure, we have five items which are commons, safety, sustainability, building and office.
Did you move, is it possible to move your screen up?
That's what I'm trying to do. Yep. So, okay. So this is going to be the next category, community safety. I believe that up for a moment. And then these, so this is some of what we have under infrastructure. Try to shrink my screen a little so maybe fit a little more on. So this is infrastructure, commons and infrastructure, safety. And these are the next three under infrastructure. And finally, these are what we have under council staff workflow and development. Half of me thinks I went through that too quickly and the other half of me thinks I went through it too slowly. So probably on average, we're okay, maybe. Do, would you like to?
It was quick for me, but.
Would you like, can I, can I show that again? Would folks, I, let me, let me show you again quickly here. Um, so these are the first two, the connect, community connection, community safety. And this is infrastructure, commons and safety. Here's the next three. And finally, here's the last page of it. All right. Let me bring us back to the community connection. So we've deleted some, we've added some, anything else that folks would like to do with this list?
Yes, I think I need to add something else to this list.
Go for it.
Um, I'd like to add updating our website to provide information on home buyer resources, referencing Mishda's programs. So I guess it could just say updating our website to provide information on home buyer resources in partnership with Mishda. That's fair.
Well, I, councilmember, some of y'all, I think that there's going to come a time when we're going to have to update it to reflect all kinds of information. I don't know if that's too specific, but I guess what I want to say is that you can just, if we have it established that we have an officer, as he's saying, a director or somebody that's over communication, which includes the website, we can funnel those things to them to put on our website. I don't know if we have to be that specific because things will change. We may have to, you know, put some other things on there, some other things that are important.
Okay, um, maybe then can I just like include communicating to the community on home ownership programs through Mishda? Maybe not necessarily at the website, but through social media channels.
Right. And that's why I agree that we need an officer, you know, some that does the, that, that would do this. Fuck, get my tone tied. That would do this often. You know, they'll be on top of the things that our community need to know about.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's totally fair. Um, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything from my 10 items.
We could scratch that off like today because we can just go put it on there tomorrow.
Yeah, 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 that's fair. Okay, thank you.
There, councilmember Somerville, also there's some, we might want to put some links to some other programs that related to that same topic of housing, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
Housing, yeah. There, because there's some local programs that are very good that offer real assistance. So. And I imagine that since we had, we're no longer under the county system, we're independent. I think that it's going to be even more important to have that director. You know, they can serve in multiple capacities, but some will always have their pulse on our IT. Right. So that's going to be a priority for me.
I'll try to word this.
Yes, please.
Who's next? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Please, I'm councilmember Morgan.
I, I'll try to word this the correct way. Um, I, I kind of want to refresh the ideas and virtues in the creed of pride, heritage and diversity in a way that's more connecting to people currently as opposed in the past. So if I was to condense that to do a new a new model campaign, like to make it more relevant to, to, to the generation not 100 years ago. I know it's a, a legacy and I know it's heritage, but to make a new, fresh hip, more connecting type of pride, heritage and diversity, it can be a campaign made. I love it. I think just to kind of, I, I think it has relevance and I think it's important. I just think it's, it just need to be more connected.
Do you mind my asking, what is the current motto?
That's what it is. It's pride, heritage and diversity. But I think it's kind of outdated. But we can't, if we can't change it, I think we can at least put a scarf on it like the Coke can, make it more palatable for a, a, a more diverse group of people.
Just be careful. I'm old enough to remember new Coke. So just, just be careful.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to, you know, that's the same, same, same great taste. This is a new look.
That's okay. Uh, councilmember Will Coxon, I see you've been raising your hand.
Um, yeah, I'd like to add an item here that goes with the functionality of the boards and commissions. I have a I had worded it in my goals as increase the input in the city commissions with the objective of nominating and qualified candidates approved and including youth members and to get a full roster. We've started doing this and we, we've started picking at this, but it's kind of a no cost thing. But I'd like to have it on the goals so that we move through that quickly. I set a two month timeframe for this. And we'd also talked about having liaisons then, so I think that's, that's a connection with the community that, that should be done fairly quickly in the first quarter.
Um, can I, can I trouble you to kind of just give me one more, one more attempt at that one liner?
The soundbite, right? Nominate qualified candidates and approve, including youth members for commissions to obtain a full roster and regular forms.
Is there a comma in there?
Sure. I, I got a lot of slashes in mine, so whatever, however you want to punctuate that, go for it.
To me, to me is really talented. So I'll just have her toss a couple of commas and maybe a semicolon in there. Maybe, okay. Anything else on this list?
I have one that I don't know where it goes. It's a, it's, it's about the city charter and having establishing a charter commission. I'm not sure if that goes here or someplace else, but I, I assume it would go here.
Think so.
We've had there's some, some ambiguities in our charter that whether that's a charter commissioner, whether that's a charter amendment on the next ballot. I'm not sure how to go about that, but it, it has been a while since we've had a charter commission. So I guess establishing a charter commission would be a simple way to say that.
Okay. I, I put establish commission to amend city charter.
True.
Okay, I have one that we need to put here. And I'm not sure exactly. We need a better way of communicating with the community, drawing in and communicating with people that are on the other side of the digital divide. We have a lot of people that are still not online, some of the older people and other people that are not. I know when schools went virtual, a lot of homes that did not have computers, got computers, but we still have a large number of maybe particularly older people that are not do not have computers and are not capable of, of going online. So we need to do some way because many times they are completely left out of communication from the city.
Can we make that a parenthetic statement in the communication plan?
How would you feel about that, Mayor Richardson?
You mean where we're talking about develop a comprehensive communication plan? Go in there. That can be part of there. I don't, yeah, I don't care where it goes, just so it's there.
More call for any other ideas here? Just so we're on the same page, in the next, um, couple of days, I will, um, work with Camia to prepare the revised list and I will send it out to everybody and just make sure you have it. If there are things you think of later that you'd like to add or, you know, wording that, you know, I came up with that you didn't like, um, please feel free to be in touch with me. We can edit this and you will have this in advance of next week's meeting when we can really talk a little bit more about prioritization. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Can I move us to community safety? Okay. All right, so these are the items that appeared on your goal list last year. And let me kind of continue the way we did this last time with what here should be eliminated because you've done it?
Um, I don't know about eliminated because we've done it, but I think we could strike out install citywide surveillance system. I don't think it needs to be included.
I don't think so either.
Although that wasn't somebody's goals, or downtown was in somebody's goals, uh, from staff.
Okay.
I thought, I thought that was, but it's not citywide, I mean.
That was, that was brought up by the former mayor last year for the, on surveillance.
I think it was in the DDA goal, so to, to form a partnership for project green light.
And, and I wonder if that particular item might also be kind of covered or rolled into the address security problems reported by downtown business owners? Uh, the one just above the citywide surveillance system?
Oh, right.
I wonder if that might be rolled into that.
Just to clarify, that project was scrapped by the DDA as well, so it doesn't show up in 2020.
Thank you.
Is this, um, are you talking the citywide surveillance system?
No, the downtown, oh yeah, I think so. I think it's.
Yeah, the whole, the whole project green light thing, um, it was an idea that never picked up a lot of traction at the DDA, so that's definitely not gonna happen. It's not, uh, part of our goals.
And you can, you can even see looking at last year, you know, all of these items got at least eight votes between council and staff and that one got two.
Um, is the, is the, the first one to implement community policing philosophy to enhance safety of our residents, businesses and visitors? Is the cop crew and, and extension of that, establishing a cop crew from that community policing philosophy?
Right, so that, this whole one through four basically is all part of that same plan that we've been discussing for the last several months. We can't take a status of detective bureau off because the end of this month, we'll have two people assigned there. So that, that's been accomplished.
We can, okay.
Response team, that's kind of slow going. We've done some work on it, but again, COVID has probably been an issue as well as hiring a, a social worker. That, you know, hiring anybody right now is very, very difficult. So all those teams are pretty much in, in some, some stage of work.
Go ahead. Sorry, yeah, sorry.
In, in the cop crew unit, like what does that consist of? Like how many officers is that?
As, as it's planned right now, uh, one sergeant and two patrol officers.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it sounds like the first three anyway need to remain, which is again, I mean, I feel like that's, makes sense to me. Um, I guess if the chief says that the fourth one has been accomplished or is essentially going to be accomplished, that's, I guess, fine. Um, I know that I, I, I'm not sure if this goes, you were asking about adding them, um, Dr. Bernstein, and, um, I was wanted to someplace capture, I guess, that, um, efforts to provide appropriate support as it relates to COVID safety and also like vaccination efforts um, for our city staff and community. We, I mean, this, you know, 2020, uh, that was not something obviously is a, a goal because we didn't know that was coming, but I think it's important to capture and make sure that we kind of prioritize. And again, maybe once we settle through all these, people will decide not to, uh, that that doesn't need to be captured in that way, but I just wanted to maybe have a placeholder and I, I don't know if this is a place where it makes the most sense, or maybe it's someplace else, but I thought it might make the most sense, um, because we still have a lot of efforts to do. I think that to keep our community safe and, um, and our, as well as our, our, all of our staff, people that work for us, just to, you know, provide that support to keep essential functions going and whatnot.
And any of you may disagree, but I, to my mind, putting this under community safety, um, vaccination and COVID protection is the epitome of community safety these days.
True.
I would agree with that, but.
I, I also wanted to add something, um, and again, maybe this isn't the best place, but you know, over the last couple of years, we've just had a lot of, um, talk with people in the city and a lot of concerns expressed about safety as it relates to traffic. And I kind of wanted to be a little more specific, I think, and maybe some of our goals about looking for new and creative options for increased like crosswalk safety, traffic calming and speed control on neighborhood streets. So trying to maybe focus the effort a little bit more kind of in areas that was residential, I guess, but.
I think that would fit under infrastructure safety.
And that's fine. Yeah, and I wasn't sure, I just thought I'd bring it up now, but I'll, I'll reserve that for them. So I think that's all I have that I thought of adding for this section, besides for what's already here.
So there, there was a question asked earlier and I don't know if I know the answer. Um, the establish the cop crew, um, that is, um, chief to just a different from the, um, community policing philosophy item that should stay as a separate item?
Uh, not necessarily. That's actually been incorporated in, in an overall plan for the implementation in community policing. So I don't know that it needs to actually be extra. Um, it's part of the organizational chart already. Um, we just haven't gotten to that point.
Okay, so maybe I'll take that off the list since it would be part of the first item.
I want to, uh, add something that I don't, again, I'm looking for wording, uh, to find it, uh, because when we talk about safety, safety is so, um, it's a, it's an internal, it's an independent individual thing. Like we're talking about financial safety, physical safety, predatory safety, professional safety, and it seems that certain groups are more marginalized than others. So it seems that certain special groups need special attention when it comes to safety, because I think safety is more than just, again, policing. Safety is, uh, again, we have people with, um, housing insecurity, that's a safety from eviction. So certain, I think, safety in its, so I think whatever is going on in the city, certain groups are going to experience a different, um, outcome regardless, um, because of whatever group they're in. Um, so I don't know how distinct to make that. Um, uh, so I, I'm saying maybe develop a special group to identify certain, uh, uh, cases. I, I, again, I don't know how, but I'm saying there's definitely, um, levels of unfairness when it comes to interaction with not just police, but with not just housing, not just, um, there's a lot of inadequacy. So I, I don't know how to balance it, but I think just a blanket thing talking about safety is not adequate.
Yeah, I want to add, um, to this, uh, personally for me, I would like to see, um, the mental health response team actually not as a part of the police department, but a way for us to take some of the mental health mileage funding and actually utilize it solely on mental health rather than policing. Um, I might be in the minority here on that, but I just wanted to make sure to verbalize it while we were looking at the list. Um, it would be nice to see what that would look like, having a separate mental health response team outside of YPD.
And council members, uh, Summer Hill, I can certainly support that. And we'll support that whole idea.
I will too.
Yep, agreed.
Let's.
And I also think, oh, sorry.
Yeah, please, um.
I just wanted to tie that in. I, I've brought this up before, but not in our goal setting, um, conversations, but I do think that that is a perfect avenue for us to collaborate with Eastern Michigan University's social work program. Their master's program would be, um, in my opinion, a really good, uh, resource to us, um, as we talk more about that type of response outside of, uh, policing.
True.
I like that too, um, council member Summerbell. I just think that EMU partnering with them is just such a win-win on so many levels and um, in this area would be fantastic. And yeah, that, I think that's just, that's great.
So, um, council member Summerbell, if I can say, um, perhaps collaborate with EMU's social work program on community mental health issues or I didn't, I don't think I captured these perfectly.
Maybe two different items here. One, mental health response team outside of YPD. Second, co, um, work with EMU on mental health response issues.
Okay.
That also offers an opportunity for intergovernmental, um, work with and working with the, uh, the county mental health, um, department at the county.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yes.
I have that as one of my goals for now, so I agree, we should put it on there and my mindset to coordinate with EMU MSW students, um, to develop our mental health team.
So, just within this conversation, is the fifth item down, use mental health mileage money for the police department, community policing? Does that remain something we should leave on the list or has the conversation moved on from there?
I thought, uh, council member Summerbell just changed that.
Okay, so that, that was the item you want to change. So use mental health mileage money.
Or mental health response.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I, because I, I, in my mind, I was up on number two, creating the mental health response team, but I didn't realize that we were talking about the fifth item.
Okay, Jeff, the fifth item was actually mine and it was
Okay.
stated that way because when we first started getting the mental health mileage money, it was used for everything but. So that's why that was there.
Okay.
I think, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
And does number two remain as it was, create a mental health response team? Because leave it as it is, okay. I'm sorry, I just misinterpreted where you guys were going with that. I'm, I'm all caught up now.
Maybe I missed it, I don't know.
I got this.
Uh, question, what have we struck so far?
By my count, um, establish a detective bureau, establish the cop crew and install citywide surveillance system.
And use mental health mileage money.
And I, I think I was editing that one, use mental health mileage money. So I, I didn't consider it struck, I just edited five.
If I could ask a question, does that change the hiring of a social worker in the PD? If we're gonna take the mental health issues outside of the police department?
That's a good question.
I don't think it, I don't see where it would.
Well, if we're not responding to mental health issues, or what are we gonna refer? That was gonna be basically kind of a, a referral issue.
And that, that's knowing that is very important so that we know, uh, the job description for that person. Are they going to be dealing with mental health, um, issues? Well, I should say, are they gonna be dealing with issues of police officers, issues that arise in schools? Um, you know, when we need to respond, I mean, that's very helpful to define.
I, I see the need for both, the, the social worker within the YPD for support, but that would, for the crisis intervention, but that it would also uh, we, report back or refer back to the mental health response team. So uh, unless, you know, or maybe a social worker that's a part of the mental health response team would be assigned to the police department, you know?
Right, I think they should be housed in the police department because I don't see any other appropriate place. Um, they're gonna be trained, you know, they're gonna know how to respond to issues that police go to, like run, so, you know.
Yeah, I think that makes sense too. I guess, I, I mean, if this is something, right, people want, want that, maybe it's, I, because otherwise if you split it up, it just, people could be duplicating efforts.
Right.
I mean, I guess a vision I could see really quick off the top of my head is we have someone who's an employee who works in this, you know, role and then they're, they're kind of working with EMU collaborating or whoever to kind of facilitate some type of team, but to have it kind of separate. And, you know, we're gonna start duplicating efforts, right? Um, I mean, the county has some resources and whatnot, and so I think we have to be kind of careful that we're, you know, we want to provide, um, appropriate helpful services, I guess, that, that enhance and don't kind of compete with what we might, might be existing, which I don't think is much, but I'm just saying, um, yeah, so I don't know, and I, I'm not sure that, that this makes sense that it's geared for the officers. I think I would want to hear if the chief felt like that was something, or is it just really? Because I mean, they, they have resources, right? We have a department, uh, we have resources for, what I mean is, uh, we have a department, there's a psychiatrist, psycholo, I'm just saying, there's something, right? We have available and that's pretty typical.
When the social worker was put, put into the goals, it was outward, it was not inward.
Right, so I wanted like.
Not for the officers, no.
Yeah, and then again.
And support of the community. And so when I know that I was one of the original people who put this on here before last year, the point, they were to work in collaboration, the social worker with YPD for crisis intervention and then that person hopefully would be eventually the one overseeing the mental health response team and those students from EMU, if we were gonna utilize them, would fall underneath that. Um, and so I hear the idea to separate the mental health response team out of YPD, but if the social worker and I wrote on my goals for 2021 again, are, is gonna fall within YPD, that mental health response team should fall under wherever that social worker is from my, in my opinion, as a social worker.
And, and would you say, and I totally agree with what you just said, uh, Mayor Protem, and I'm thinking like that, they should almost be like the, the leader in conjunction with, you know, city manager, the chief and whatnot, you know, and working through that stuff, but, um, is it putting the cart before the horse a little bit? You know, first we need to get the social worker before maybe we can have this as a goal. So I'm almost wondering if the goal of the mental health response team, to me, that should be a goal of this person, once they get in, settled and, you know, get a lay of the land kind of a thing. I don't, I, it seems like, I, I, I'm not sure how we can do both at the same time and have it be effective.
I think the other piece of the mental health response team was that there were members of the police department who were also going through health first aid training and different things regarding mental health as well. And so that is why they were coinciding at the same time because it wasn't the end result in particular, but there were pieces that were happening in YPD to help prepare for this team to happen as well. So it wasn't that, um, it's just, you know, like the cart before the horse, there were things that are happening, you know, simultaneously so that we could have that happen at the end.
And that makes more sense to me.
So to Mayor Protem's point, um, just as a reminder, we did just go through the one mine campaign for ICP where the entire department was trained in mental health first aid. We have nine officers that are trained in CIT, uh, a 40-hour class in CIT. Um, we have a model policy that's accepted by the International Association of Police. We have a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with community mental health to try and do as much um, co-response with them as we can. Obviously, COVID has brought everybody to a somewhat of a sandstone, going out, doing things. Um, but all those things were pushed towards the goal of having this mental health response team and having that social worker in-house to try and help support those things mostly after the fact that, I'm, I'm sure they could probably respond to some things, but one person is not gonna be able to respond to all the mental health calls that we have in the city.
Okay, so just to make sure I'm on the same page, I'm hearing we leave, create a mental health response team and that we leave, hire a social worker within YPD and that we reword number five, the use mental health mileage money to just sort of be for mental health purposes and not connect that fifth goal to the police department. Is that? Am I hearing and
Yes.
comprehending correctly here?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Awesome. All right. Um, anything else to add to this list?
Um, I mean, so this is happening, uh, in, in my ward at the moment, but I did want to elevate to like as a council goal, the support that we're giving with the housing commission around safety and security concerns because that is, has, will, continue to be a citywide concern, um, for everybody who wants to live, work, you know, and spend time, um, in particular areas of the community. I think that we are seeing, um, increased violence across the city, the county, um, and it should be something elevated to a, a council topic of discussion, not just a ward discussion.
I agree with that, uh, Mayor Protem, and, uh, I think I commented on the, um, report we got from the the police chief over the weekend. Uh, I think we really need to do something. We're having more and more random shootings throughout the city. Uh, I know, yes, over here. Uh, I know, yes, over here in Ward One, at the new, uh particularly at the New Park Ridge, and also down at Hamilton Crossing. And or on Harriet, but also uh from some of the reports that we've been getting. It's uh being noticed more around the city, and we definitely need to do something. I don't have an answer, but I know that we need to look at it, and as you say, maybe council discussion. However, uh, but it's something I think that we cannot just let go on.
Um, so council member Brown, I have um increased support for Housing Commission for Security Concerns. Is that? You can help me do better.
It it, no, it's not, it's not you, it's actually me, um, not just the Housing Commission, that's something that we're already doing. But I'm saying that we, I think that um we need to increase city councils involvement. And the support and discussion around safety and security in our entire community. Um, not just in that particular area, even though that's where some of the focus for the Ward One reps and our mayor um has been.
Okay. Yeah, that's. And we move along to talk about infrastructure? Awesome.
I've actually got uh one for the safety category, if I could.
Sure.
Uh, it kind of ties in with the last one here, and that would, that was uh working with police citizens and and other groups to eradicate gun violence and shooting.
Work with police and citizens, is that what you said?
Police, citizens and other groups.
Yes.
Including the the Housing Commission.
From your mouth to God's ears.
I actually have one that fits into this category now that I think about it. Um, I think that both um the items that I included in mine for the housing trust that we have um utilized. In our last uh two budgets, um and then also last year, we were able to put some resources towards barrier busters. And I think both of those deal with housing issues that are public safety issues, um so I guess. Two separate items, um, one, supporting, continuing to support the housing trust that has been established. And then the second one being um supporting the barrier busters program at the county level.
Safety. Both seem. Good with that?
I'm good with that.
Um, we'll add it to the list.
We're adding it to community safety?
If that's, I I trust you guys more than I trust me to determine if that's where it best fits.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I think it may be best suited for public safety, just given the the crisis involved with homelessness. Um, maybe, I don't I don't know where else it fits, actually, in these categories.
I was thinking that that warming center or something that council member, was it council member Morgan mentioned? I think we'll go there.
I think those two things are are separate, though, because a warming center is like a physical space.
Right.
As far as what we're talking about, supporting initiatives that support safety, it could be a lot of different things and um.
I get it, I get it, it's it's just kind of trying to figure out the best.
Yeah, I think it's probably different than what we normally do. But I think that like, just in, just with what we've seen over the last year with the pandemic. I think that the two may fit into public safety better than, you know, other areas.
Think if one does, probably both do.
I could be wrong, but.
I don't nece- I don't necessarily agree that they both belong in the same category, I still think that they're separate, even though they're both addressing safety. But they're addressing them in different ways.
Oh, sorry, I meant in the same category, but separate items, sorry.
Not, not you, I think, um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry, I know it's kind of confusing, because we've likely have, we've not really done that before. But I just think, like personally, while we're talking about our goals, that we should, and I I'm thinking that the two. Deal with issues that fall into public safety concerns.
I definitely think the warming falls into um, you know, the safety concerns. Possibly, it's, yeah, it could, or it could go another place. Go on, uh, council member, Will Cox.
I I was thinking the warming center would go under infrastructure, uh, in terms of the the commons, cause I I have resilience hubs uh under mine. And thinking, you know, where does that go, yeah, I mean, that's a safety issue in terms of, you know, uh. In a, in a general sense, but what I'm talking about is gonna be, um, I think that in the warming center, we'd go under infrastructure.
It could very well go there.
Makes sense, that makes sense to me.
It does make sense.
So we'll take the warming center and make sure that we put that under infrastructure. All right, should we move to infrastructure, um, start with commons?
Council member Brian, I mean, uh, well, Brian, did you get your um item put in?
Under safety, yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is what um council had last year for under infrastructure commons. And let me start off, um, as we've done, by asking if there's anything here that should disappear from the list.
Yes, we've monetized the Maple Street lot.
Okay.
I think removing the Peninsula Dam Engineering Study, Public Engagement, I think we've done that portion.
No, we haven't.
We haven't done this, the engineering studies for Peninsula Dam?
No, I'm reviewing the the bids right now. Um, so I I think that needs to stay there, um, I I was thinking that the public engagement part should be moved up to the uh, the very first category. In which the uh, cause that's, that's related to infrastructure, but that's really connection with the community. So we could separate, I have those separated out in in my goals, and I'd like to separate the public engagement and move it up to the uh, the first category.
Which is the public engagement, I'm so, oh, um, so under the remove Peninsula Dam Engineering Study and move public engagement to the very beginning?
Right.
The very first category?
Yeah.
I might be wrong about the monetizing Maple Street lot. For some reason, I recall a resolution on the Maple Street lot months ago, am I wrong? Or was that just like a resolution to support the like step in that direction?
It, it was an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the DDA to pay monetizing that. So we got the kiosk in there, ready to go, uh, but the DDA doesn't wanna turn it on yet and start charging people.
Of course, yes, okay, sorry, I was ahead of the game.
We can remove that then, right?
Yeah, we we can remove that.
Okay, okay, cool, I didn't mean to remove it because I didn't like it, I thought, I just thought it already happened. Um, I guess one that I think should go here is, I would like us to work on, um. Coming up with uh more equity in the parking permits for downtown residents, I think that goes here.
I think when I think of infrastructure too, I I think of our financial infrastructure. And I know sometimes we're, like, we're just meeting the deadlines of certifications and licensing and compliance. So I think having some kind of fail-safe um way to stay um in compliance for our financial infrastructure is important.
Thoughts on that one?
Would that be more of a um staff workflow?
Counsel. Okay. Perhaps, yeah.
Um, I have another one that may go here, someone can correct me if you think it should go somewhere else. But um, one thing that I would like us to see is put more retor- resources into the um Public Services Department. Um, we ran into a lot of issues last year with just like timing, and maybe it was staffing issues um with mowing. We are getting much better at snow plowing um of the sidewalks and parking lots. But um, you know, emptying garbage cans and stuff, I think personally, like stepping up the staff capacity in DPS. To assist with those seasonal things would be helpful. So I think in my, yeah, in my um notes that I submitted to Andrew, I just included more, more resources. Resources for DPS for summer and winter, winter maintenance. I think that goes there, I, if someone thinks it goes to other place, let me know.
Can I ask again what the, what the upcoming uh categories are for infrastructure, there's.
Under in, under infrastructure, the upcoming categories are safety. Sustainability, buildings and office.
Wow, that's kind of hard, gonna be hard to track.
Yeah, this, this part's difficult, it goes somewhere in infrastructure needs, um, I think it goes in the commons. Although it could be a safety issue. It's both, because if, if our weeds are too tall on corners and people can't see, and if people slip on ice, it's a safety issue, but it's also a commons, I don't know.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Safety, all right, I'll skip it for now and include it below.
Only because it adds the heat to it, you know.
Yeah, but I think normally people may not think that mowing is considered a safety issue. But I know that if we aren't maintaining our islands in the, you know, like on River Street, for example, and it. Interferes with visuals while driving and things like that, it's a safety issue, so.
Makes sense, I'm kind, um, council member Will Coxon, can I come back to you for just a second? Um, you had mentioned language about adding to the first category on public engagement on Peninsula Dam.
Yes.
Um, is that good language for you, or would you like?
That's perfect, that's perfect.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, anything else to add or delete under infrastructure commons?
I I have a question about the um determined viability of water and water system.
Yeah, what was that about?
What was that, I don't think we did it, and I'm.
That was uh, that was, that was mine.
Or no?
Um, I'm I'm a water, I'm paranoid, um, I just think of that uh waters are last. I just wanted to know how, like, if we did a assessment of, of course, where our water come from, how much we have, we have reserves. If there was some panic or crisis, that there were um some emergency situations that we knew of or had planned. In case our water was contaminated or something happened like uh happened in Flint. So I just wanted to have that on the record, what kind of um emergency um situations we had with our water source. But I don't know how important that is to everyone, but I just thought uh my paranoia had to put it on there.
So, that's kind of addressed in the goal I have for resilience hubs. And uh in in terms of if our water system goes out or if there's contamination. But that's a huge thing, um, and it seems like it falls under Yucca's.
It does.
You know, or in in some of the public health would be from this, from the county, so the Yucca would certainly be dealing with that particular issue.
Oh.
Right, because we don't handle our own water, we're in.
Right.
Regional system.
I don't think most of the people of Zalani know where their water comes from, um.
Lake St. Clair.
Four hundred, okay.
The streets of Detroit.
Yeah, I'm saying, like, uh, wherever Flint, I I, again, just because we get our water from wherever we got it from, don't mean what happened in Flint can't happen.
Right, just as a side note, did you hear that the uh Attorney General is going to prosecute our former governor?
I did, I saw that today.
That was.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Breaking news.
Yeah.
So on that water viability, um, it could be deleted. I could add the words work with Yucca to determine, um, or we can leave it as it is.
Yeah, but we we can strike it off, I'm sure if Yucca uh already has those complete statistics in there, um, in their information, maybe it's just redundant.
Yeah, maybe we can just get the report or get the information and make it available to council, just so that we know about our water. I I liked um that work with Yucca on that, so.
I'm hearing some voices for killing it and some voices for work with Yucca.
I think it may be something simple, like, simple information, maybe that we could just ask from them to provide to council members in the community. If we see fit, so we could leave it, I'm I'm not opposed to leaving it. I think water is like a critical resource that, you know, whatever, but I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure this one makes sense to me in this context. But I guess if we.
It strikes me as a kind of thing that if this is something that, say, the mayor or manager can send an email to Yucca. And say, we would like this information, I wouldn't put it as a goal, I mean, you know, you know. Sort of like my philosophy that sometimes I'll put, you know, wake up on my to-do list, so as soon as I get out of bed, I can cross one item off. Um, give me, but uh, I I don't know.
I think it's an easy thing, just to uh request some information.
Yeah. I can request that information so that it's available for the community and council.
And and hopefully there is no issue there, and if there is an issue there, then it obviously becomes a much higher goal, moving into the future.
Right.
Yeah.
The transition to downtown permit parking location, it looks like it didn't get any votes last time.
I think we still did.
What is that?
Update that, but maybe I'm wrong.
Second from the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, if we did, then we, we also don't need it.
Yeah, we don't need it.
Okay. I'll be dead. Anything to add here, besides what we've uh, what we've talked about?
Should our affordable housing issues uh go in this section?
I was, oh, sorry, yeah, I was gonna ask that, cause I was thinking about adding mine to the next one, but. I don't know.
I, looking at what's here and looking at what's below, my instinct is that affordable housing probably fits more under com- under commons. And safety, at least how things have been done. Yeah.
Cool.
What should I add?
Well, um, let's see. Working with MML, which is the Michigan Municipal League, to discuss and develop additional, additional affordable housing resolutions. That was one of mine, I think it should go there. And then developing.
I think it fits there.
Yep, and then I'm just continuing to develop um city property. Um, but I also wanna include non-city owned property as well.
Need to develop city property and non-city owned property?
Yep.
How so, on that last part?
Um, on the non-city owned?
Yes.
There's a number of sites in the city that could be redeveloped for housing needs. Um, so I think, you know, I personally would like to see some staff resources going towards proactively um engaging in those areas. Um. I'm trying to, yeah, like a good example would be like, I know right now there has already been a letter intent put forward for the College of Business. But let's say that falls through, it would be really nice if if we could be proactive about encouraging that site to actually be developed for housing. Rather than office space, that would just be one example.
Okay, I.
Yeah, and um, other, yeah, as like, if and when the university maybe sells other um property to. to private developers actively um, promoting housing to be developed rather than office space. That was kind of what I was thinking.
Okay.
It's interesting because I see the, the university more as a, uh, an entity that gobbles up housing than.
Which is why we should be working with them to reverse some of the damage.
Give you that.
Just because contracts are certainly, like I said, any, only bad contract is one that can't be renegotiated.
Anything else for this section?
I guess I was looking at that, the same topic. Uh, are we still on the comments? Yes, we're on the comments. Um, establishing a policy for the, for current housing stock and the new developments. So the new development was already mentioned, but um, there have been a number of things that have been, then talked about in the last year on ways to make the current housing stock more affordable. And I guess it's, it's not even an infrastructure. Well, I mean, it does relate to infrastructure, but it's a, it's a commons policy more than anything.
So establish policy for making current housing more affordable?
Yeah.
Steve, when you say that, can you help me understand a little bit? And, and I totally support, we need to have affordable housing, but one of the things that came out of that countywide study was that we also need to add um, housing stock that's kind of in the, you know, the middle and upper realms too, right? Um, to support our tax base. And so to me, what could make sense is that, well, we, we need to have affordable housing, but not necessarily that you drive down the price, but that you, you support it. Like what I really love is EMU and their commitment, you know, and I, I think they're still doing that program, but you know, basically they would provide some money to buy a, a house, invest in the city and it kind of programs like that, that. So like that, you know, that like I, that's, I love that kind of stuff. If there's, you know, and not that we have any other kind of big employers. I mean, that's probably our biggest employer in the city, but um, I, and you know, so I'm kind of want to understand because somehow we have to balance to um, you know, what, what we, we're doing. But I think there's like creative ways of supporting it that's a win-win uh, for our city.
True. And, and then that, that I made it general enough that that would certainly fall into what I was thinking about. And, and the presentation we got from the, the developers that are not working in Water Street were showing creative ways to get people to, to afford um, all the different levels of, of housing costs.
Okay.
Listen, could we, could we add a section for housing to infrastructure just to make this a little bit more clear? Because I think we have a lot of things that would go into that section.
One for commons, non-housing and one for housing? That would make sense to me.
Yeah, we just have, yeah, looking at everyone's um, goals, it seems like we have a substantial amount of goals.
Yeah, so I've got um, the work with MML, the continue to develop city property, the established policy for making housing um, more affordable. I think all of those would go into.
Working with EMU.
Um.
Housing needs.
I think that would also.
Everybody had housing in their goals as I'm looking at them, because I also had to address housing stock issues within the city involving EMU.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would make sense to just create a category for housing and.
Should it say housing affordability or just housing?
Just housing.
Okay.
For me.
Yeah, just housing.
And, and I don't think anything that's currently on the infrastructure commons list would move to the housing category.
Currently, no.
No.
Just the new stuff.
Um, I, I have one to add if we're, you know. Um, and that would be uh, equitable rezoning.
Okay.
Well, I guess, uh, now I'm thinking that the, the establishing, continuing to establish funds for the housing trust should go in this. Maybe not, maybe it stays.
If we have a housing section now, I think it could go there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think. I even think the piece about um.
Barrier. Yeah.
Housing, if we're gonna have a housing section.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna have a housing section, you're right. It is public safety related, but if we're talking about housing in general.
Yeah, um, I think, so one of the things I think we can do is, um, as Tameya and I work on compiling this and sharing it, we'll pull out items that talk about housing and shove them into here. Um, I can't necessarily find all the housing references immediately in my notes, but I think we'll be able to kind of pull things that speak to housing and put them into a new category like this. I think that should be fairly cool. Um, so Councilmember Jones Chance on the equitable rezoning, um, help me with language on that. Um. Pro- propose policies for pursue, I, help, just help me on the wording if you would.
Yeah, I'd like pursue equitable rezoning.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I, I, I don't know if I should know this, but what does that mean? Councilmember.
There are some.
Are you looking to accomplish?
Yeah, there are some uh, projects in the works as far as rezoning a certain area in Ward One. And uh, you know, in the past rezoning is, has not been equitable. Um, and so I would like to, to see that it be done in that fashion. Um, and that uh, we get more community involvement when we do rezone areas. And as a city, we do so pretty frequently, and I think there's a push to get more things moved into the core neighborhood mid designation. And uh, if we're going to continue down that path, I, I would like to make sure that we do it equitably.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for this section?
We, we already have something where we uh, believe, like uh, determine if all of our abandoned buildings or houses are up to code or, or safe. Uh, uh, I, I believe that's already something that's established like that in the city. As far as safety.
We have our building and maintenance codes that uh, monitor our, our housing, our rental properties.
Okay. Yeah.
So we do.
We don't have any, many burnt or abandoned buildings or vacant buildings, but just.
We, we do.
Just to keep them up to code, just to keep them safe, whatever, like to continue.
We have a dangerous buildings ordinance and.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, we already have a dangerous building ordinance.
Uh, I think uh, improved accessibility could go here. And that would go, you know, both for physical and non-physical. So anything from our website to our public spaces or our public buildings?
Are we, I'm sorry, can I just clarify? Are we still on infrastructure commons?
That's where I thought we were.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I was gonna ask that same question.
Sorry, I know we were almost done and then we came back and then we created a new sub category.
Hmm.
Um, maybe also just to kind of piggyback off of what Brian just said. Um, it would be nice to, when we, if and when we um, establish a director for our communications moving forward, I would like us to focus on making sure that our communications on social media are eighty, like accessible for folks that are visually impaired, visually or um, yeah, visually impaired.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilco- or, Summerville, I, that is really important too, that, that we have an accessible website.
Yes.
Yeah, and social media. I think social media is where we miss it often because when we post images, we should also be to put, like, we should also be sharing descriptions in the text. That way folks with screen readers get the description of what is displayed.
Can I suggest that these might fit better under community commons rather than infrastructure?
Probably. Yeah, prob- that's probably right.
Okay. That it, that just struck in my mind, um, as we said earlier about the digital divide and just ways for peo- for you to communicate with people.
This is why we hired you.
Differently. Yep. Okay, um, let's move on to um, infrastructure safety. Um, before we do, I feel the need probably under the terms of the Geneva Convention to offer you a five-minute bathroom break or stretch break if you would like it. Um, I'm seeing, yes, okay. I didn't know if you'd want to keep plowing through or take a short break. Why don't we take about, um, as I often tell my classes, let's try to hold this five-minute break down to about seven or eight minutes and then we'll uh, we'll resume. Alright, see y'all in a bit.
Alright.
Um, see, let's see how far we can go with this stuff. Um, I'm enjoying our time together. I hope you guys are as well, and I, I hope you're finding this useful and valuable. Um, so I believe my screen is still shared and you can see the infrastructure safety piece. And um, let's start from there. So it looks like last year we had about nine items there. Um, what's done or no longer of importance or interest?
Well, Jeff, the first one, the in-car camera system that's slated for purchase in the next budget cycle.
Okay.
It's a part of capital, capital plan.
Okay, so it's happening so it can go, or should I leave it?
I, I would just leave it until we actually do it.
Okay.
Um, and the fourth one down, the AFIS fingerprint machine was delivered today, so you can take that off.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, number four is dead. Anything else?
Um.
How are we coming on the uh, for installing four-way stops?
So I was gonna, yeah, that I believe I added last year, and there were two intersections in particular in Ward Three that I was curious about, but that didn't go anywhere. Um, I think I was told that there weren't actually, the data wasn't there to support that. But I still think that there are several intersections that we need to look at throughout the city that could be turned into four-way stops.
Was that at Cross and, and here and you were thinking that, because that one's, that one really needs um, I think.
Where the slip lane is.
Yeah.
So.
Needs to be done with that.
Yeah, I think that's still, for me, getting rid of that slip lane is a priority, and I've talked about that when we were talking about the road diet coming up on Huron. Um, I've also spoken with MDOT, so I think we can leave that and in, in like just knowing that it includes the slip lane. Because yes, I still, I personally still think that's a priority. I know that it's a priority for residents that live right there.
Yeah, it's just dangerous.
It's very dangerous. And I know, and I do know that MDOT is supportive of that.
Okay.
Um, one thing that we can cross off because it is in action currently is the install lighting at Frog Island.
Okay.
I also think that a snow buddy program is actually unrealistic at this time, but some of the sidewalk maintenance for the winter was covered under the previous, no, it goes here. The, the increasing support for DPS, um, but that covers both summer and winter. So I think the snow buddy could be crossed off. That was mine from last year. I don't see, we don't have the, the financial support to do anything like that right now.
So I'll, I'll ask you a question that I think came up in a conversation with uh, Councilmember Simons a little bit ago. Um, even if it's not likely to get the votes, do you want to keep it on the list to sort of preserve it for future year discussions or not so much?
Hey, and Annie, sorry, Simmons by the way, but um, Annie.
Simmons, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. I, I think this is still a program that's worthwhile and I understand why it's not a, maybe. Yeah, no, I would love it. So I'm, so yeah, let's leave it. Sorry, let's leave it. I'm underestimating myself here, so yes. Let's leave it. But we could cross off the lighting at Frog Island. That's happening.
Okay.
Maybe finished. I don't know if, if Ron's on the call, but.
Wasn't this morning.
Yeah, it's, it's in action, but.
Yeah, it hasn't been finished yet. They're, they were working on it today though, so.
But DT is like, it's go, like, it's being installed essentially. That, the motions are in order.
No, okay. Um, I know we've added some stuff from the list from previous conversations that ended up here, but anything new to add to this list at this point?
I think for safety, um, maybe updated signage and uh, repainted lines in the street.
Okay, got that.
Yeah, I think uh, this may be the, a place where um, implementing better traffic calming and street design measures might go. I think almost all of us had some variation of that.
Yeah, that's number three.
Yeah, it was left over from last year. So I think that's definitely still, yeah, we should still leave it.
And um, I guess what about street and road design?
So the way I had phrased it was, um, and then maybe I thought it was maybe generic enough to kind of address that. Um, where I just said, um, explore new and creative options for increased crosswalk safety and traffic calming slash speed control. So to me, that meant, would, could include really any measure that's outside of, you know, I don't know, but maybe that's not, it's too broad or not specific enough.
Is design a measure?
I don't know, Steve.
See, I think measures incorporates policies in, in uh, engineering. It's sufficiently, it's sufficiently general.
I mean, as long as we all understand it that way, I guess that's.
Yeah.
So um, can you hit me a bit with the language one more time just to make sure I'm hearing where you guys want to go with this?
I, I think uh, Mrs. Simmons had it better.
I mean, I, I can just, and then maybe Steve or whoever, or Brian if you want to add, but I just said, um, explore new slash creative options for increased crosswalk safety and traffic calming slash speed control on neighborhood streets. Now, I, I was folk, thinking, you know, specifically with our neighborhoods, but I guess any street is important to me, but.
Right.
But it, you know, I was focused particularly in the neighborhoods, but yeah, I don't know. And if, if, do you want measures in there someplace, uh, Steve?
Uh, that was my wording from last year. It came directly out of mine from, so anything that makes it more specific or uh, that's fine.
And would that, would that replace the third item on the list or?
I, I think it's like a rephrasing of it.
Yeah, okay, right, that's.
Is that good for you, Brian?
Uh, yes, um, yeah, I, I don't know that I would want us to be strictly neighborhoods, but.
And we can scratch that. I, I, I don't, I mean, I just want to improve it everywhere. I, I know we've had a lot of concerns, like kind of two neighborhoods, but yeah, the whole, whole darn city, whatever we can do.
Could we leave neighborhoods there and add uh, ma- major streets too?
Neither works for me.
Because I hear a lot from uh, residents about the neighborhoods and it's needed, it's really needed all over.
Um, may I ask a quick question here just for my own curiosity? What is a hawk light?
Oh, yeah.
It's high, let's see, what is it? I thought it was similar to what was in by Eastern's campus, no?
I, 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 I do, do not, I don't, just don't know the phrase.
It's the light where you press the button and then it alerts. We have one on Michigan by.
Crossing the street?
Yeah, and it doesn't, it's like you have to press the button and then it signals and then it stops traffic, but it's not one hundred percent of the time. You have to actually press, the pedestrian has to press the button. I could be wrong, but I think.
There is one, there is one there on Cross up by um.
Dom. By Welch Hall, by the tower, by the.
Right by the tower, or right after the tower rather. And then there's also one going into downtown from the east side. It stands for high intensity activated crosswalk. So it's like, you know, the pedestrian activates it. So it's only activated like when needed, but it's high intensity to really get your attention.
Okay, aw- awesome, thank you. I just, I saw the phrase and I had absolutely no idea what it meant. So I figured I'd take the opportunity with all this expertise in front of me to learn something. So thank you for that. Um, anything else to add to this section? All right, let's, uh, let's move along to, um, the next, the next three sections don't have many items in them, so um, we may, yes.
I apologize. I had one about, I wanted to talk about our curbside recycling, and I, I'm not sure if that's really infrastructure, but maybe it is. I apologize, because I actually missed, I missed.
Sustainability, maybe?
Oh, sorry, we're over hitting that next. Sorry, I was looking at my list and I had it, never mind.
All right, yep. So let's, uh, take a crack at, uh, the sustainability item. First, anything to eliminate?
Did we digitize the financial records? No, because that was in Reagan's goals again this year, right?
Councilmember, we did, uh, digitize some of our records, but not everything yet. Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, records that we, we still use paper. Probably we can just keep it there.
All right, um, so nothing seems to be going. What should we add? Councilmember Simmons?
Okay, I had one to consider that, again, this, this seems like probably a low priority compared to a lot of things that we have to deal with, but I wanted to bring it up because I hear enough of, about it from citizens, and it has to do with our recycling and how we do it. I get a lot of people telling me they would love to see us do, you know, like the recycling, also our trash, you know, where it's like the, the large bins where the machine comes by, you know, and, and kind of picks it up, so you've got one large bin. I don't know that that's feasible at this time, because I know we have contracts and things like that, but, um, our bins, like, I mean, this again, and maybe this isn't really a goal, but our bins get the heck beat out of them, and they are always constantly destroyed, the, the recycle bins that we have. And so we either need to figure out something new, new bins or something, and/or how we're collecting it, because again, and maybe this isn't, uh, isn't for a goal, but, uh, our trash, people leave a new contractor for trash, and consistently they dump the trash, they put the, the, the lid on top of the can, like, they're pretty darn careful about it. Um, I mean, I'm not saying 100% of the time, but the good majority of time, instead of it being like just thrown wherever, like I'd say, maybe we had previously. Instead of, anyway, I, I don't know, there's an issue. I hear a lot about it. It's one of those kind of like quality of life things, and it seems kind of petty in the light of some of these other things, but I, I get a lot of complaints about it.
Sorry, I've actually been getting complaints about people's recycling bins being broken.
That's what I'm talking about, because they just throw them, and then, you know, and when it's cold, it's plastic, they break, and so like, I'm, I have, it's a shambles, you know, and
Yeah.
That, that costs money to then replace those.
Yes.
It's either we need our people to collect them, you know, and then set them down, not throw them down.
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm just saying, or we need to figure out a different system.
Yeah, no, I think it also goes into like staff capacity, because I wonder if there's like a rush, and that's why they're being tossed instead of placed. Um, because, yeah, I've heard that also recently.
Yeah, well, I work from home and now I watch it every Monday, you know.
I don't get to recycle where I live, because I live in a building with eight apartment units.
Yeah, and, and again, I appreciate our staff and I understand, um, but somehow if the trash people can, you know, set our stuff down nicely, it just seems, otherwise we need to figure out a different system for it, because I, the recycling needs work. So again, I don't know if that's a goal or just another thing that we just, you know, work directly.
Again, I, I defer to you, but my suspicion is this might just be something that if you brought it to the attention of the most relevant person and sort of, I, I don't know if it, if, if it, if you'd want to list it as a goal, I'm not sure, but I defer to all of you.
And that's totally fine. Annie, we can talk to Ron.
Well, yeah, I think it's part of it is like just capacity, like staff capacity, which i- it kind of goes into like increasing support for DPS in general.
Yes, yes. And I, by, and that means, meaning to disparage them, I, you know, I love our DPS workers, but.
Ron had, had, uh, mentioned this in a previous meeting in terms of looking at the costs of, uh, doing the large wheeled bins that, uh, would require a special element on the truck. And I'm not sure if Ron wants to address that now, because if we made that a goal, I, I, I don't remember what the cost associated with that was.
Oh, the, there are options where we could do recycling carts, and there are grants that are available for it. We actually, as part of our public, uh, recycling container grant, we talked with Eagle, with some of the, uh, agencies that are responsible for that specific grant, and it was brought up by them that we could apply in the following year for, uh, recycling carts. We would be, if we were awarded the grant, we would be responsible for 20% of the cost, but, um, it, it is an alternative to having the recycling bins. All of our trucks are equipped to, um, you know, they have the cart tippers on the back, so our guys would just need to get out, move them to the back, and then, uh, there's an automated mechanism that'll pick the carts up and dump them into the truck. Um, so our vehicles are equipped to do that. Uh, there could be room for efficiencies in the future. I know Ann Arbor and there's other communities, they have fully automated recycling systems, so their trucks are equipped with a special arm, where they can pull up next to a, a, a cart and tip it by themselves. The, um, the advantage with that is with regards to staffing, because if you have a fully automated system, you only need one staff member to, to operate it on a route, so there could be some opportunities there, but, um, we are planning, um, unless otherwise directed, we are planning on applying for that grant next time around, um, to try to implement carts within the city, and, you know, we'll see what happens. But, um, with regard to the bins, I will remind our staff again and, and maybe have a stronger conversation about the bins. Um, I know the, the, with the type of plastic that we've used in the cold weather, they are pretty fragile. But we'll, um, we'll, we'll have a reminder and, and have that conversation. We have some newer staff members, um, who have signed on, who uh, haven't gone through the conversation yet, so we will, uh, we will do that.
So does it, so then, if you're going, if you're going to pursue that, does it make sense to add as a, as a goal then, or, or not? Like I said, I, I think is that, would that be not be this, this go-around that, that, you know, that would be, you know, that you would be in for it?
I, when, when we were putting our goals together, I actually included it under increased recycling, because there are some other benefits to, to having the, the carts. Um, there have been studies that show that recycling rates increase when you have those type of carts and have that availability. There's increased capacity. The carts will probably be, uh, at least over twice the size of what the bins are right now. Um, so there's other benefits to it. Uh, there, there's some disadvantages with, with the quality of the stream, uh, the recycling stream, but you know, the, the, I think the additional recycling kind of outweighs that, so. So we had included it under our increased recycling goal. Um, if council wants to do it separately, we can, we can do that as well, but they all kind of tie together.
No, that's okay.
Quick question about that, Ron. Um, would that create other issues with the single stream?
There could be the potential, um, if you add carts, uh, there could be the potential that our contamination rates would increase. Um, but that is going to get hopefully combated with some of the public engagement stuff we're going to be doing with WARMU, um, about educating the community on, on what is allowed to be put in the recycling bins and what are not.
Okay.
There's other things you can do too, to kind of mitigate it, but, but yeah, that's, when you look at adding carts, that's a potential negative, is that our staff aren't going to be sifting through them, uh, like they do.
Gotcha.
I think I'm hearing enough conversation to maybe suggest, I drafted some language, um, explore moving to recycling carts rather than bins. And perhaps it should just be on the list and folks can determine for themselves whether they consider it a priority or not for the current, for the coming year. Awesome.
That'll work.
Awesome.
I think something, as far as sustainability, I think, uh, emergency management plan update. Updated emergency management plan.
Okay.
I believe, I thought the fire department most, did one recently. Ken, are you on? Ken Hobbs? He was. Okay.
I'm still here.
Did we update our emergency management plan recently, or no?
I have an updated emergency management plan from the county, but not from the city specifically. In order to do it for the city, it has to have input from every department. We'd have to sit down, have a meeting to discuss that, and about the time we were talking about doing things like that, uh, we stopped interacting with each other, uh, then everything kind of went virtual.
Okay, so we were about to do that, okay. And that is just something that we need. Um, the city hasn't had an updated one in a while.
Correct.
I, I put it on the list.
Okay.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Um, so to go along with that, um, the Sustainability Commission has been talking, um, over, over the last year about, uh, creating, um, resilience hubs. I have a, a, a goal in mind about, uh, increase the city's resilience, physical, financial, the climate change. And, and part of what's happening in the Sustainability Commission, um, one of the commissioners, Brian Foley, is, is, uh, trying to create one at, at Parkridge. And he's got, uh, the use of, uh, some storage areas there, but the, the greater conversation was to have resilience hubs, um, throughout the city, um, so that in the case of, you know, uh, crisis events or, you know, catastrophic floods, things like that, that these, um, these locations would be places where people could go. You know, you see, you know, people congregating in a, in a, in a gymnasium or something like that, but that, that is one, the biggest gymnasiums are in this, are in the township, but, um, having these things like having resources at the, the freight house and the senior center and, and Parkridge and various places where, uh, other resources are available. And so, um, there was a presentation last night. Mike Ron Jackson, uh, had gotten grants to do this, and, and my goal was to have these space throughout the city. For, um, you know, this can, can be in the case of floods and things like that, but if you expand the thought of what, what constitutes, uh, you know, the, the triggering events for that, um, COVID is certainly one, uh, you know, housing insecurity is another one. So I'd like to put that into the, the infrastructure here.
I have language here, um, which I don't think is, is right, but please chime in. Increase resiliency and sustainability in case of emergency.
Yeah, but specifically for, um, create, create resilience hubs throughout the city. At least one in each ward with, uh, with an emergency planner, and this kind of goes with the, the previous conversation about updating the emergency plan.
Okay, I got it. I didn't hear the word hub the first time. That would have helped me. Thank you. Anything else on this category? All right, um, why don't we push on down to buildings? There were four items there from last year.
Uh, Fix River Street should definitely stay on there, because it's still beat up.
Is that a building?
Oh, is that Fix River Street? I don't know how I got home building.
Um, River Street is certainly not a building.
We might as well take that off then, so I guess that's why I didn't get much play, but, yeah.
Should that go to another category?
Actually, when we do our road projects and we start to prioritize, I think that's when we need to talk about river and where it fits in at.
I think for now, we'll move it to the infrastructure commons. Okay, awesome. So we have three items here. I'm not hearing anybody moving to eliminate any of them.
The only thing I added to my list was to, um, add, uh, uh, increase our get back caught up with our rental inspections, because obviously we have been doing them for the most part this year.
Can I actually add something to the buildings?
No.
Um, this wasn't included in my original documents that I submitted to Andrew, but, um, and maybe Joe can butt in if he doesn't think this is a good idea. It would be nice to develop a relationship with MISTHA to get kind of alerted when a rental property inside the city fails one of their inspections. So when MISTHA reviews sites where people are utilizing vouchers, sometimes they fail their inspections, and then the person can no longer use the voucher there. Um, so I don't know if there's a way for us to establish a relationship with them to get notified when that happens, but I think it would be a good idea.
I can definitely look at that with my MISTHA contacts.
Sweet. So I don't even know if, I don't know, maybe we can, it, it kind of goes into our regular, like, it fits in with the buildings that were already responsible for checking in on every, you know, two years, but this would actually be an easier way to get alerted when there is a building that, you know, might be pretty unsafe for people to, um, be living in. Because there's another entity checking in on them.
Anything else to add to this category?
Uh, yes, um, uh, increase, increasing, uh, rates of homeownership among historically disadvantaged groups. This will probably wind up in the, the housing section, but might as well.
Yeah.
Say it here.
Would you be okay if that moved to housing?
Yes.
Okay. We will put it there. Okay, anything else to add here?
I don't know how relevant is that. I say, uh, upgrades to, to city buildings, I guess, to increase value. Lay a little carpet down, I don't know what to do.
Move City Hall. Let's go, let's go big.
Add another floor.
Take over the business school for City Hall.
I was thinking just cleaning the chairs, so.
New City Hall, new police station.
Okay, shall we move to, um, office? There's three items there from last round, and I don't know if there are items to add or delete.
We've included the clean and organize offices before, and we've already installed stalls in the treasury and in the accounting department, so I'm not sure if the other departments are still planning to um, organize their office.
Yeah, well, I think more City Hall in general just needs to be cleaned.
So it stays there, I think, I guess.
I, I would recommend that, yeah.
Perhaps not the sexiest part of, uh, this whole agenda here, but. Yeah, it's, uh, sort of like a day spent cleaning the house, right? You finish and you've worked all day and you're really just back to where you should have been originally, so. But important stuff to do. Okay. Any more to talk about here? All right, this is a short section. I thought we'd fly through that pretty quickly. We have two more things, so one is council staff workflow, and then the final item is council staff development. So let's start perhaps up at the top with the, uh, workflow. I think there are 14 items there. That can go.
I see, um, we completed chapter eight, um, of the Adult Use Cannabis Ordinance. Um, that can be scratched off because it has merged now, um, the master plan. I don't know, do we technically need to scratch that off since we're getting ready to disperse that to the public?
I'd say leave it on, because we still have, I mean, well, we can check it off the list early in the year, but.
Yeah.
I'd certainly leave it there, because we still have to do it.
Man, okay.
You can remove increased efficiency and polling location management, purchase new poll books.
Um, we can take the Christie grant off because we.
We did it, we just weren't successful.
And I think from the last time we had this discussion, we weren't. And I think from the last time we had this discussion, we weren't interested in continuing to pursue that right now, but.
Do you want to kill the whole line or just the piece about the Christie grant?
Well, we could replace it with, um, something that says that we should explore regional.
Regional transit.
Yeah.
I'm cool with that.
Is it okay to scratch the Rutherford Pool MDNR grant? Uh, I understand that the, the last disbursements are in place.
Yeah, that, that should be done by the time this fiscal year rolls around.
So, I'm, I'm sorry. So on that whole Rutherford Pool line with the MDNR and Christie Grant, how does, how should that look?
Um, just take out those Rutherford Pool MDNR grants.
Okay.
The Chrissy Grant should be changed to, uh, whatever they just said.
Regional transit.
Regional transit.
And yeah, grants.
Work on TAP grant, regional transit grant and Eagle grant.
Well, we, 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 we finished the MDNR grant. We got the TAP grant. We didn't get the Chrissy grant and we did get the Eagle grant. So I think we're looking pretty good.
There's also, I thought, oh, sorry. I think Bonnie's about to say what I was thinking.
Yeah, we do have another DNR grant that is.
The Natural Resource Trust.
Yeah.
Yep. I feel like that's like something that can be on permanently because we could apply for those all the time.
Bonnie, where does the grant that we were looking at for, um, Frog Island fit in here?
That's from the DNR. That would be from the DNR and private donors. That's, I don't think that's considered in the goals currently.
Okay.
So, please help me again. I, I've just, there've been so many things added and scratched to this one that I'm not exactly, I apologize, I'm just slow picking this one up, but, um, what should that line read at this point?
I think you just take out Rutherford Pool.
Okay, so complete MDNR grant?
As one.
Okay.
And then a separate line would be explore regional transit and available grant funding.
Regional transit and available grant funding?
Yeah, and that kind of says that we reach out to other people about forming a regional transit, you know, in the area, and then we look for money.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Um, I haven't been in the building in a long time. Do we have a records clerk?
That's police. Was that police or was that Bill? That was police. Because the police window was closed on Fridays.
And so, has that been fulfilled?
Well, we've been closed now because of COVID.
So actually, the, uh, it was an upgrade at the part-time to be a full-time and that wasn't funded and actually it's probably a good idea it wasn't because the records bureau has basically been shut off to the public. They're doing other work that they're catching up on, but, um, there's no real demand to be open on a Friday right now.
Should I, should I keep it on in hopes that soon enough, God willing, there will be?
We would definitely have to make sure that we, um, allocate funding for it.
Yeah.
If we keep it on.
Um, I see one that we could cross off because it's covered somewhere else. Um, the hire part-time staff to write news releases. I think that falls into that communications director deal.
Um, I put something on there that, I don't know how to feel about it. I want to take it off, but I'll, uh, to formulate an equity identifier tool to ensure equity and decision-making. I think it's much more easy to identify inequity than to provide tools to ensure equity. So, um, in our protocols and practices, so I don't really know.
Do you want to just reword it?
Um, yeah, create, um, I, I guess, create, create equitable solutions, um, for city protocols and practices. Like I say, I, I think the inequities are easier to point out as opposed to solution-oriented tools to offset it.
Okay, I have that.
We could also scratch off that implement electronic payment to vendors and employees. We have done this and we already got in response from our vendors. Probably sixty percent have signed up for it. I think we're good to take that off.
Excellent.
Um, for capture all outstanding AHB fines, uh, they were placed on the winter tax bill. Uh, if council wants to leave it on, that's fine, but we're, we're up to date and we'll just continue to, those will be rolled on to each tax bill as, as the, as special assessments.
We could leave on compensation study of non-union employees. I, I'm, I'm leaving that on and I had added it again because, excuse me, because we did begin the study, but as far as implementation, how that will work, um, we're not finished with that study. So I'd like to leave that on.
Are, are we okay? Um, I think Andrew had suggested that perhaps the capture all outstanding AHB fines could go, um, is that something folks are okay with?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine if it's caught up, yeah.
So we've eliminated a few, we've added a couple. Um, anything else to, um, to add to this list?
What about ca- the increased efficiency and parking collection? Has that been, um, handled?
So there is an online permit renewal for, um, downtown parking permits.
Right.
So, um, potential to expand it to the residential areas as well.
Okay, so leave it.
Uh, the outline residential should actually be online later this week.
Okay, then, yeah. It could be removed.
Which one? I'm sorry?
Red one.
The red one, okay, sorry.
Has the third floor been reorganized yet?
Yeah, it was cut from the budget last year, um, and so, no, we have improved some efficiencies by taking credit card payments, but it, it has not been reorganized.
Okay, thank you.
More to do with these items?
So the reorganized third floor, was that, that was just basic, basically construction, like making the offices or different?
Yeah, so we moved into the third floor, I think, a year and a half ago. We wanted to have a year to, a, a little over a year to see how it kind of functioned. Um, and there's a lot of, uh, inefficiencies with the way it's laid out. And so we just thought having it all be one, one department, one floor really makes sense. Uh, so that we don't have to have multiple counters and people getting lost. Uh, I think Christopher and myself spend more time directing people back to the building department and co-enforcement than we do actually helping people that are there to see us. And so that's, it's one of the many inefficiencies in the floor.
So I, 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 I still kind of wish we could have the one-stop shop where, where they're doing it on the first floor though, that they don't have to come up to the third floor and make payments.
I think that would create, it would take more, um, uh, that would take more, uh, reorganizing of the first floor as well.
I mean, I just think that that's ideal because.
Well, it, it, it couldn't be a one-stop because they, they have to go up to the billing department in order to get to, to submit their application and then they would just be sent down to, to process the payment. It's, it's easier for the, 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 the user to pay there and then just be on their way out.
Yeah, so that was the idea of setting up the one-stop on the third floor.
The one-stop on the third floor.
Yeah.
I mean, I get that. So the reu- the reorganization will make the one-stop. I, I don't, I don't understand that one yet, but we can talk about that.
We'll talk about that.
Anything else that, uh, worth talking about here? All right, let's move on to, um, council staff development. And last year, there seemed to be seven items there. Let's first start off by anything that you have accomplished and would like to kill from the list.
So, uh, the fourth one down procedural justice training series for police officers, that was accomplished over this past summer.
Okay.
And the one underneath it, um, should be done by this coming summer.
Okay, is it, is it in process right now?
Yes.
So worth getting rid of because it's happening? Or worth keeping?
Just leave it there as a place marker, maybe.
Okay.
You completed the one line campaign, right?
That's correct. The one on the bottom's done too.
Okay. Some of these, I imagine, are just ongoing things. I mean, you're, you never, you're never going to cross off develop positive staff council work relations. That's, I think, an ongoing thing that you're always working toward. Um, any items to add to this list?
Is this our last category?
This is our last category.
Because I have, I have some things that I need to figure out where to put them in.
Okay.
I wanted, I, I said develop, um, goodness, give me one second.
Can we remove the, uh, noxious weed ID training?
That's what I was going to ask about.
If that's even necessary at this point.
I think it still is in the way we changed that, that, uh, that ordinance, but, um, Joe would, I, I, I thought that was already planned to have the officers trained.
Yeah, my, I mean, with the, with the, from the, uh, oh boy, was it the watershed council? I forget where the list came from. It almost seems like there could just be a, I don't know, a booklet.
It was a Sustainability Commission and it came from, uh, a state list.
Yeah, was it, do you know? Well, I forget. I guess it doesn't matter who made the list, but I, I imagine there could be photos or something. I mean, I don't, I guess I don't, I guess my question is how much training is involved?
Jokes.
So the, the goal was to actually have the code enforcement officers trained for the first time, I think, and, and at least a very long time. Uh, and to roll out that training this year, uh, like actually send them to training. Um, but obviously with COVID, that did not happen. And so, um, I still would like to keep, it doesn't have to be noxious weed identification training, just more, um, code enforcement and, and trainings, uh, in general. But I mean, that's, it can be removed because we could, I mean, that, that doesn't have to be an exact goal, but it's something that I do think they should have training on, um, in general, but as with all my employees.
Could I say pursue, um, additional training for code officers and just eliminate the noxious weed specific item with that capture?
Yeah.
I think, I think this is a better place. I think, uh, Brian had helped me. Uh, when we're talking about workflow, workflow or staffing where, um, I had mentioned, um, having, staying ahead of the schedule of certifications, licensing and compliance, um, I know that wasn't the sustainability, but I think, um, when it comes to workflow, I think it may better fit here. Um, and, and I wanted to add.
Which we, I'm sorry, which was that one?
I, I mentioned, um, as far as, um, our certification, licensing and compliance, um, being the code, having a fail-safe method. Um, so we wouldn't have to be, uh, always under emergency or penalty, but, um, I, I, I thought it was under sustainability. I thought it may fit better here under, um, that, I think it was a workflow. I think, um, Brian had gave me some language as far as the staffing. I think it was more of a staff as opposed to.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so I have a, a couple I wanted to add. Um, implement annual rate, uh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Implement employee performance raises. I wanted to put that under, I don't know, staff development, maybe. I know I'm going to have to attach a budget, um, amount to that, so I wanted to add that. And, um, also, um, implement training and leadership program for employees. Those will require funding to allow for more training and then also for us to develop our own internal leadership program for, um, so that employees can feel valued and that they can also, you know, have certain certifications, um, you know, as employees. Yeah, so I wanted, I wanted to add those two. What else did I have here? Um, yeah, I think the other one was covered, but I think they would go there.
I think they would as well.
We had talked, oh, sorry.
Yes.
We had talked to you about, uh, potential council raises. I don't know if that's appropriate now, if really, that's just really at budget for budget, but I didn't know if that was important to set here or just say.
I think, I think that, um, you can put it here so that we remember, or unless you guys just remembered to bring it up at budget time.
That's all right. I don't think we need to add it.
I was just going to say add it.
I think, uh,
You know.
Take you backing up what the city manager said. I think, um, having, uh, developing a, a framework for more effective scouting, recruiting and, um, staffing and promotion. But I think that's under the umbrella, but definitely recruiting, staffing and promotion, um, city staff.
You can always put here, um, Jennifer, um, uh, e- evaluate council pay scale, something like that as a goal. And that means we look at it, you know?
Like, I mean, that's fine, I guess. I think.
It's kind of reminds us to look at it.
Um, I think I would like us to look, um, more, I guess, into, uh, developing additional support for council. And when I say that, I mean, um, uh, a way across the board for all of us to have, um, like, a little bit more admin support for us, because I think that there are times where individuals think that we have time to, uh, do things that if we had, like, even if it's an internship program for council or something of that sort, um, to help us, um, work with some of our community engagement, um, organizing some of our out, outward community, like emails and these different things, uh, and this just came to me. I did not have this on my list, which is why I'm kind of stumbling over what I'm trying to get at, but I hope you are getting the picture.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Where students can get, you know, some experience in the political sphere, civic engagement, working alongside us, but something that for council specifically on that side of things.
I, I.
Bro Tim, you reached right into my mind and took that out.
I would be remiss if I did not say here that if you ever are looking for students who are in public administration or political science or things like that, um, please reach out to me and I will certainly be happy to connect you with.
Thank you. I will reach out to you.
Please, please, I, I would love nothing more than if you can find a really good place for our students to be engaged and learn.
Yeah, and I think.
Give back a little to the community.
I think that comes from, there are times where I have been contacted by students, but I think if we had some type of official capacity for us to know that, like, each semester or each year, we would have a group of students assigned to, one of them assigned to each of us, something like that. That could be really, uh, another good collaboration with EMU.
That'd be great. And I, I don't actually myself oversee such things, but I, and if you are interested, get in touch with me. I will make the connections happen. We will make this happen.
So I did have that. I, I, I just kind of held out on that. I had that as one of my goals. And I sort of, how I wrote it down was to, um, develop a student program with, uh, WCC, EMU and even YCS.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And so I believe that that falls under there because we could also, um, be mentoring and training of students, but also, um, we just need to really establish a program where people are coming, you know, that they're migrating in and out and they're learning the system and they're assisting our council people. We may even be able to assign one to each person at some time, you know, but we need to help it. So that's why I had that on my list, which was to develop, um, a student program.
I, I certainly don't need to tell you that, uh, it would be a very good thing if you got college students understanding local government more and wanting to go into local government and public administration more. Um, that'd be a win-win all around.
Um, I, 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 I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. I, I haven't, I haven't mentioned it at all and I, I should, but I, I do want to increase a better relationship with the Ypsilanti Public School system. Because I know along, um, in conjunction with college students being, um, more civically, um, inclined, same thing for our high school. So whether it's our, 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 our school board, but having a better relationship, um, initiate a better relationship with our, um, with our, our school, um. with our school, with our school board and our
Students.
Yeah, students.
Yeah, I just want to add that I support all of that. It is really valuable to have internships at any level of the government, of government.
Question, as a goal, then, could we make it a goal to have one staffer, you know, voluntary or otherwise per ward, or is the feeling that we would need more than that?
I think you need, I think it needs to be right now, like, develop a program versus something that's specific, because I've been a part of like kind of supporting programs elsewhere and it takes a lot of work. So it's not as simple as just finding people and having them volunteer. There's a lot actually, a lot of administrative times, you know, to bring in people to kind of volunteer. So I I think it's a fantastic problem. I'm saying it, I'm totally behind it, but I think like maybe the first step is kind of developing a program, you know, that the city manager, you know, with with what she's thinking and kind of with our ideas and then kind of going there about this, from there, from the specifics, but instead of, you know, saying something specific to start, like you know, because I don't, you know, maybe to start, it's, there is like one person per three of us, or I don't know what, or one per ward or something, because but who knows the specifics until we see like what's viable and.
It would also vary based on like semester also.
Yeah.
Which would be a reason to make sure that we establish a good foundation with the university, because ideally someone there would help us implement this.
I mean, look, I, you know, if you contact me at the beginning of every semester, I would, I would do it. I would make it happen, keep feeding you students. It is better for the long-term sustainability of this if there's actually a program in place and if it has, if we know that it exists and this is just something that's part of you know, what's happening at EMU. It avoids reinventing the wheel every semester.
So we'll just need to determine what exactly they would like these interns to be doing.
Yeah, maybe.
Once we have that information, we can create a program and work with the city manager and HR to develop that.
And I think, so I think that's what my goal really was. It was around preliminary discussions around this type of program to support city council and the city in whatever capacity so that we can start having those conversations. And maybe the goal will be that we come to terms of what our expectations are by the end of this year and then move into something next year, hopefully faster, but really to tease out what this could look like and what we could actually do.
Yeah, I like it.
Anything else to add here?
Well, this is a small component. I definitely think some of those people involved should perhaps serve on some commissions to to, like, whatever criteria we decide as far as for the program. I think feeling and streamlining some of these commissions with students and young people could be helpful also.
Else to go here? All right, so before I turn you back over to either the mayor or the city manager or the clerk, I don't know who takes it from here. You will get from me in the next couple of days a list of all the items we have come up with in each category. I apologize in advance that I imagine to me and I did a pretty good job capturing exactly what you're saying and organizing it exactly as it is. Perfection is a goal, but perfection is probably not attainable. So if you do see things that don't look right, please let me know. I'm happy to make corrections and we will spend time in our next session, kind of looking at each section, discussing your sense of prioritization. We can vote on each one, see which ones rise to the top, see which ones don't. And that will be the basis of the official goal-setting report that I offer to the city.
I wanted to ask, I thought, city manager, did you have other things that you said you didn't know where, what, like what place they should go or where they said already? Oh, you're muted.
After I looked at my list, I do see where some of them I could just implement as action steps and some of the other ones. So I'm I'm good on those that I just said. I wanted to make sure that those made the list because they are going to be attached to money.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything from our city manager.
Thank you.
Uh, council member Will Coxon?
I I also just came up with one that came from the Sustainability Commission meeting last night. Michigan Department of Environment and Great Lakes and Energy has a Michigan Catalyst Community Academy that would involve people from commissions, from staff, from council to go through a training. It's year-long training. And so I'd like to put that into put the Michigan Catalyst Communities Academy into the sustainability category.
So in in car, send, is this council members or staff who would go to these things?
It's it's staff commissioners and council people could do that.
Got it. And that was under sustainability.
Yep.
Got it.
In housing, I'd like to, I saw on my list, I'd like to add removing barriers to housing for homeless citizens.
Got it. Okay. Anything else? All right, well, thank you for your attention. Thank you for a really good discussion and let me turn it back at this point to whomever I turn it back to.
The mayor.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, mayor, it's all yours. My pleasure.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you very much.
Don't thank me, don't thank me till you've seen the report.
Well, no, you put in a, you did a lot of work tonight. So but do, we do want to thank you and if all minds are clear, did anyone have anything, anybody have anything they want to bring up for the good of the order? Okay, this is quiet. I will entertain that thing that we do at the end.
Support.
I thought we just all fell asleep.
I know. The break, it was so quiet. All right.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Properly second, all in favor of adjourning this meeting?
Hi.